And I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is 7:30, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting for April 15th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Protamblis?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilman Muir?
Here.
Counselor Robach?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Counselor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Graffstein?
I am here, thank you. The invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Councilman Fleming. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up this evening, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Not an addition or deletion, but I'd like to move Reports Nine as a 4B, to move it up in the agenda.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
He wants to move Nine to where?
It's the Historical Commission, the proposed naming of the soccer complex, the Park Pavilion.
To where?
To just...
Oh, under presentation?
Yes.
Your Honor, just to move it ahead of the budget, we have a couple members of our Historical Commission here, and I'd hate to force them to sit through the entire budget presentation if at all possible.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, motion carries. We will make that 4B. And can I get a motion to make an adjustment to Number Five, which is the presentation of the FY 2025 proposed budget and just the removal of FY 2026? Can I get that motion, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, motion carries. That has been changed. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right, seeing none, we will move into the first presentation, which is the certificate of recognition for Michael Shepard. Whereas Michael Shepard purchased Northern Audio Service, formerly known as Northern TV and Northern Radio, in 1993; and whereas Michael Shepard relocated Northern Audio Service to Madison Heights in 2012, a company that began in 1940 with its first location in Detroit; and whereas Northern Audio Service has had a long storied history with three owners since 1940, in the 1940s Northern Radio acquired the largest inventory of televisions and sold them mainly to bars as a novelty for the rare broadcast of the day. As the television business boomed, at one point Northern TV had five locations; and whereas Northern Audio Service continues to expand and grow with the technology changes that happen every day, while continuing to step back in time to when Northern TV got its start servicing antique radios and phonographs; and whereas since relocating to Madison Heights, Michael Shepard has been civically engaged serving on the city's downtown development and brownfield redevelopment authorities and continues to be an active member of our community; and whereas Michael Shepard was instrumental in the success of the Historical Commission's History of Music event assisting with providing information and sharing his knowledge for the benefit of all. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Madison Heights extend our thanks and appreciation to Michael Shepard for his role in preserving the history of the city of Madison Heights and for his contributions to the advancement of our community. All right, second. We have National Telecommunicators Week proclamation. So the city of Madison Heights proclamation, whereas the number 911 is universally recognized as being dedicated to report emergencies; and whereas the telecommunicator response to calls for help gives the residents of Madison Heights a quick response to emergency calls for police, fire, or emergency medical services; and whereas the safety of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the actions of the telecommunicator and the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who contact 911; and whereas the telecommunicator serves as the first first responder and the voice of the help, providing direction and comfort to those in crisis to rely on when they call 911; and whereas 911 telecommunications play a critical role with their public safety partners above and beyond the normal call of duty. And now therefore it be resolved that the City Council of Madison Heights declares the week of April 14th to 20th, 2024, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Madison Heights in honor of the men and women whose exceptional dedication and professionalism put forth in contributing to making Madison Heights a safer place to live, work, and visit. And then we have our National Animal Control Officers Week proclamation. So whereas the, where a call for animal control services is requested, the prompt response of the animal control officer is very important for the protection of human life and the welfare of helpless animals and pets that are rescued from injury, disease, harm, and inhumane treatment. And whereas our animal control officer provides a number of services to this community, including responding to domestic animal calls and complaints, checking the welfare of pets, inspecting pet stores and other animal facilities, catching and returning loose pets, ensuring pets are properly vaccinated and licensed, investigating complaints and animal bites, responding to calls on wildlife, and moving wildlife to other locations for their safety; and whereas our animal control officer is a hardworking member of the Madison Heights Police Department and is dedicated to the service of animal control needs in this community; and whereas this week of appreciation recognizes and honors ACO Paige Wallace and part-time assistants Gillian Whalen and Angela Benner. And now therefore it be resolved that the City Council of Madison Heights declares the week of April 14th to 20th, 2024, National Animal Control Officer Appreciation in Madison Heights in honor of the men and women whose diligence, caring, and protections of animals help keep our city, citizens, and animals safe. All right, and then next up, we have Number 4B, which was moved from Number Nine. This is the Historical Commission's proposed naming of the soccer complex, Rosie's Park Pavilion, the City Hall Executive Conference Room, and the Active Adult Billiards Room.
At the April 10th, 2024 meeting, the Madison Heights Historical Commission made a recommendation that City Council name the soccer complex as Swanson Soccer Complex and Fields. The pavilion added to Rosie's Park after Elva Mills. The executive conference room in City Hall be named after Lindell Ross, and the Active Adult Center Billiards Room after Rich Clark. If City Council concurs with the recommendation of Historical Commission, a motion would be made to name the soccer complex as the Swanson Soccer Complex and Fields for Edward Swanson. The pavilion added at Rosie's Park for Elva Mills, rename the executive conference room in the City Hall of Lindell Ross, and name the Active Adult Center Billiards Room after Rich Clark.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we move forward with the recommendation of the Historical Commission and name the soccer complex, the Swanson Soccer Complex, for Ed Swanson, the pavilion that we'll be adding to Rosie's Park for Elva Mills, the executive conference room in City Hall for Lindell Ross, and the Active Adult Center Billiards Room after Rich Clark.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I know we're at a later date, going to be honoring each person in a little bit more detail as we do the naming rollouts, but I want to give kind of a very high level of each of the people. Ed Swanson is our city's second longest-serving mayor, I believe seventeen years. Councilman Soltis and I, when we joined, Ed was our mayor, and the one thing about Ed is throughout the entirety of the Great Recession and all the difficult financial times, not only was he always his cheery positive self, but he inspired our staff and the other members of council at the time and our residents to find hope in what was otherwise a very difficult time. Rich Clark, who we talked about at the last meeting, after having recently passed away, was added to this list by the Historical Commission. We had intended to do three every year, and he would have been on next year's slate, but we wanted to make sure, it was very important from the Historical Commission, that his family be able to participate in this in what is a difficult time for them. And so Rich, among other things, I believe he was one of the founders and one of the main operators within the Sharp program, was a very long-term proponent and active member of the Adult, Active Adult Center Board, and if it involved our seniors in the community, Rich Clark was always among the very first people involved in volunteering his time. Elva Mills had a, what I think is one of the most interesting and not talked about careers, both in our city and beyond. Unfortunately, she passed away back in December at the age of 92, and you know, Elva served our city for 12 years on City Council. Previous to that, she was on the Madison School Board. She led a lot of initiatives around parks and programming and activities for the children in the community, but what's also interesting about Elva is that after she moved away from here, she ended up becoming a council member and mayor of Lexington, Michigan. And so she's got, you know, decades of public service, multiple decades here in Madison Heights, and then continued that up well past retirement. So definitely excited that we get to honor her and we get to do it in Rosie's Park within the Madison District that she still loved, and a park that she was very fond of. And then Lindell Ross served for 15 years on our City Council, is the only member and will be the only member in council history to have three consecutive terms as Mayor Protam. He was the parliamentarian, he was the member who would get the council through difficult conversations, and I think it's fitting that the executive conference room, where we often go into to discuss closed session challenging information, will be named after him. And so I just want to say before council votes on it, these are all incredible people who helped make Madison Heights the city that it is today, and honoring them I think will bring some visibility to the things that they did, but hopefully inspire the next Lynn Ross, the next Elva Mills, the next Richard Clark, or the next Ed Swanson. I also want to highlight the members of the Historical Commission that are here tonight. Our Chair Jenny Ballantyne's here, and then Kevin Wright, one of our members, because this is such an important thing that our commission gets to do. And so Councilman Fleming and I are on that commission, and the discussions around naming things and honoring the people who helped build the city is paramount to the work that we're doing in the commission. So I want to thank you both for being in attendance here tonight, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments, questions? All right, so I want to thank the Historical Commission and the two members who are here for everything that you have done for this. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, motion carries. And next up, we have a meeting open to the public. No, sorry. And we've got the presentation of the fiscal year 2025. Mrs. Marsh, you're up.
Sure. So I have about a 20-minute presentation, and then we will open it up for questions from council. So typically in the past, we've gone page by page, but that's not the plan tonight, unless you have something specific that you want to ask. So tonight, I'm pleased to present the proposed budget to the City Council and the public. This format's slightly different than the dedicated budget workshops that we've held in the past, and hopefully will lead to more transparency of our financial plan in the upcoming year. Before getting started, I would like to acknowledge the outstanding efforts of Finance Director Linda Kuneth and Assistant City Manager, although that's not your title anymore, Adam Azorsak, who was promoted to Special Projects and Grant Manager today, as well as all the department heads and staff for the excellent effort in preparing a priority-based budget that continues to maintain existing services and implements our city's strategic plan. I would also like to thank the mayor and city council for their leadership and support in planning the city's financial operations responsibly and progressively. This budget is a project of our collected efforts bringing success to our community. The proposed budget is presented in accordance with the detailed calendar that is contained in the policy document. Last fall, the annual budget process formally began with a review of the long-range financial outlook presented to City Council at our annual strategic planning meeting. Following this meeting, that starts the future year's priorities, we complete the capital improvement plan, followed by the preparation of the operation budget, which begins in January, all leading to the proposed budget we are reviewing tonight. This proposed budget was posted online and submitted to City Council on April the 4th. The remaining highlights of the budget calendar include tonight's council budget presentation, and then the adoption of the budget and tax levy, which is scheduled to take place at the next council meeting on May the 13th, the second Monday in May. In our budget presentation today, we plan to spend a few minutes discussing the guiding principles used in developing the budget. We will provide the fiscal year 2025 budget overview, discuss the strategic plan and how that aligns with the proposed budget, and discuss fund balance and fees. We have also included a brief discussion on two major revenue streams, grants and marijuana industry funding that has allowed us to complete significant projects and keep the tax levy below the authorized amount for the past three years. Following this detailed discussion, we will briefly touch on other funds, which includes major streets, local streets, and the water and sewer fund. Linda will now present the budget overview and the budget guiding principles.
In preparing the budget, the goals and financial policies adopted by City Council guided our process. First, staff have conservatively estimated revenues and expenditures, including a thorough review of each department with the respective department head and a careful and updated analysis of projected revenues. Second, we balanced each special millage with the applicable expenses, focusing on millage reserves and prioritizing needed projects. Third, we analyzed projected fund balance levels and, working with the City Council through the goal-setting process, strategically allocated a minimum use of fund balance to cover our goal priorities, allowing us to maintain the targeted fund balance. Fourth, we reviewed the taxes and fees being charged to residents and businesses, resulting in a millage reduction for fiscal year 2024 levels and increasing the utility rates. And fifth, we will seek alternative funding options for budgeted services and projects wherever possible. The total budget equates to $66.2 million in fiscal year 2025. The budget includes proposals for 13 appropriated funds and represents an increase of $732,785, or 1.1% over the fiscal year 2024. Most of this increase is due to personnel costs, including five new positions, mid-year and annual wage adjustments, citywide pension contributions, and insurance increases. These are all reoccurring costs and will contribute to higher operational costs from now on. Of this $66.2 million, $10.2 million is capital outlay. This includes assets such as vehicles, equipment, building maintenance, and infrastructure such as roads and water mains. Although the city has the ability to levy 25.9381 mills, this proposed budget is supported by a tax rate of 25.4572 mills for fiscal year 2025. The proposed tax rate is a reduction from fiscal year 2024, when the city rate was levied at 25.5288 mills. The budget is projected with revenue growth across all funds due to a state tax commission inflation rate multiplier of 5% and increased state shared revenue. Even with this higher-than-average state inflationary rate multiplier, the city's taxable value for fiscal year 2025 is still only 90.9% of what it was in fiscal year 2008. This prevents the city from restoring service back to the 2008 levels. This chart shows the city's tax distribution for the 10,339 single-family homes and condominiums in Madison Heights. For fiscal year 2025, the average home market value is $202,433, with a taxable value of $56,212, and an average tax bill of $1,431.27 for city services. The city, like businesses and residents that call Madison Heights home, has continued to feel the pressure of expenditures due to inflationary increases. While many expenditure areas have returned to traditional increases of 2% to 3%, we experience wage pressure to remain competitive in the region, especially with public safety departments. This is reflected in the proposed budget on the wage reopeners and extensions for all union contracts. This budget also adds five new positions. We continue to be very conservative with reoccurring expenditures to ensure there are reoccurring revenues to support these position increases. The positions are a special project grant administrator, three emergency medical technicians, EMTs, and a motor pool mechanic. And now I'm going to turn over the presentation to Melissa.
Starting in the fall of 2018, the City Council and staff worked to develop plans that articulated the future vision of the community. These plans considered everyone who lives, works, and visits Madison Heights, and centered on developing a solid tax base to allow us to build a strong community and provide services at superior levels. These priorities guide the budget process and include public safety, infrastructure and capital assets, quality of life, economic development, financial stability, and sustainability. Using this strategic plan as a foundation, this proposed budget includes the council's priorities and addresses the following key issues. Public safety is our number-one key to a vibrant community. This budget continues a commitment to safe community by funding traffic safety improvements at $50,000. This is in addition to the $50,000 included in the current year's budget. Staffing levels in the fire department are being increased to help meet demand for calls. The fiscal year 2025 budget includes the addition of three emergency medical technicians in a new program we are working with the union to create, which will help meet the hiring demand and train the next generation of employees. These EMTs will be available for services on a 40-hour workweek schedule during traditional peak call times, which are Monday through Friday. Funding for the staffing is being covered by the increase in revenue from ambulance services of $200,000 and general fund operating millage. The court building security replacement is included at $42,000. This security equipment was originally purchased in 2002 to screen all parties entering the courthouse to ensure the safety of the public and the court staff. Also included in the budget is the Phase Two of a technology network upgrade and mobile device management funded at $145,000. This is needed to secure our computer network with equipment upgrades and training. Maintenance and upgrades to our capital assets and infrastructure are also key components of a vibrant community. This includes ensuring that our buildings, roads, and water and sewer mains are maintained. The fiscal year 2025 budget includes the police department HVAC boiler replacement budgeted at $200,000 that will be combined with $650,000 that we have saved over the prior two budget years. Phase One savings from the Fire Station One roof replacement project is included at $200,000, for a total of $900,000 that will be needed for the entire roof replacement endeavor. And major and local streets are budgeted at $1.7 million, including Phase Three savings for the John R. overlay at $500,000. Quality of life is the city's third priority of funding. This includes library services, parks and recreation, and the Active Adult Center. Today, our presentation focuses on parks. The fiscal year 2024 budget, that's the current year budget, includes 1.4 million in park improvements, which will take the remainder of fiscal year 2024 and most of 2025 to complete. This is in addition to the complete renovation of Ambassador Park, where Oakland County Parks and Recreation is working with the city to create a premier multigenerational recreational space. Due to the time needed to complete all these projects, which are detailed on this slide, additional capital projects in the parks are not being budgeted for 2025. In March of 2001, in 2021, the city finalized a five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Since then, the city has invested over $2.7 million in our park system and completed most of the projects in that master planning document. Considering that the five years is also up at the end of this calendar year, the fiscal year 2025 budget also includes $25,000 to fund a new Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which allows us to continue to take advantage of grant opportunities through the state of Michigan and Oakland County. Economic development is the fourth priority and spans both the general fund and the downtown development budgets. Economic development activity in the general fund is status quo as we work to complete a redevelopment-ready status and focus on several new opportunities, such as the redevelopment of the East Ten Mile, or the former Sayers' property. Developing Wacko Bowl Business District has been the focus of our Downtown Development Authority. Over the past year, staff and the DDA have worked on the development of a streetscape plan that you see on the screen. The fiscal year 2025 budget for the DDA includes $400,000 as implementation funding for this 11-mile streetscaping project. We are hopeful that this budget can be used as a grant match. As part of this overall streetscaping design, the DDA budget also includes increased funding to be made available for facade grants to businesses located in this area. I also want to take a minute to briefly discuss a major economic development tool that we've utilized, the establishment and marijuana facility license throughout our community. Staff will present a comprehensive report related to marijuana facilities in general later this year, but I want to touch briefly on the funding, as it does assist the city financially in meeting our general obligations. Since 2019, the city has collected over $1.1 million from marijuana facility businesses. from marijuana facility businesses. This includes facility license fees, donations, and revenue sharing we collect from the state. All of these facilities have also increased the taxable value by redeveloping the existing dilapidated properties. In addition, these businesses have donated to a Progress Forward Community Advisory Board Fund in the amount of over $500,000. This funding is applied for through a grant process and has been utilized to fund the food pantry, community events such as Trail Tunes on Juneteenth, bike fix-it stations and backstops in the parks, murals, and disc golf. For a full list of items that this Progress Forward Community Advisory Board has funded, visit our website. It's www.madison-hights.org/progressforward. Financial stability and efficient city services has always been a priority for our city. As such, we have taken several steps to deal with one of our major financial challenges that continue to hinder our ability to fully restore services to pre-recession levels: the legacy cost of police and fire pensions. As detailed in the strategic plan, the fiscal year 2025 budget continues to address the city's funding of the police and fire pension. As of June 30, 2023 Actuarial Report, this fund was only 55% funded. However, the city applied for and received a Protecting Michigan Pension Grant of $3.6 million for pension contributions, and has budgeted an additional $3 million for both years fiscal year 2024 and 2025. With this additional funding, we are hopeful to reach funding levels of 65% by June 30, 2025. Two years ago, the city council added a sixth priority area: sustainability. Since that time, staff has made strides to move the city forward in this area. We have participated in the Michigan Green Communities Challenge and recently received Silver Status. With the recent renovation, we have updated the mechanical equipment in our civic center complex and started tracking and benchmarking energy uses and savings through the city facilities. We applied for and were awarded a Sustainability Planning Grant through Eagle to create the city's first sustainability master plan, which was just presented in draft form to the Environmental Citizens Committee two weeks ago and will be finalized and presented to city council by the end of May. We have become a tree city, receiving our award for four years in a row just last week, which helps us take advantage of grant opportunities for tree planting, planting over 500 trees in the past five years. The fiscal year 2025 budget includes an additional $30,000 to continue expanding the tree canopy throughout the city. We have also applied for and were recently awarded a $500,000 grant to create a decarbonization plan for southeast Michigan, which includes our partners Lanfor Schools, City of Ferndale, and the City of Oak Park. The fiscal year 2025 budget also includes funding for the citywide recycling and trash bin program in the amount of $1 million. This program is partially grant-funded, with over $500,000 coming from the recycling partnership in Eagle and $538,000 coming from the general fund. Next, Linda is going to talk about the general fund balance and other funds.
Due to strong financial management, our city survived the worst economic decline in our history and emerged with solid financial reserves across significant funds, allowing us to use these reserves to make much-needed investments in our community. This slide tells most of the general fund story. The green and yellow bars represent general fund revenues and expenditures. The blue line illustrates the available fund balance, or savings, and the red line represents the council's target fund balance. As of June 30, 2023, the general fund's unreserved but assigned fund balance was $11.5 million, with a planned use of fund balance in fiscal year 2024 of $2 million and no use of fund balance projected for fiscal year 2025. The city has a fund balance policy requiring a minimum fund balance of 16% of operating expenses plus one year of debt payments. For fiscal year 2025, the minimum fund balance will be approximately $8 million. This budget meets that reserve policy by maintaining a fund balance estimated at the end of fiscal year 2025 to be $9.5 million. Since we started strategic planning, one of our guiding principles has been to seek alternative funding for budgeted services and projects when possible. We do a great job advocating for funding, researching options, and reaching out to federal and state representatives, as well as private partners, to ensure they understand our needs and priorities. This chart illustrates grants that we have successfully been awarded. It does not include other regular state and federal funding items, such as roadwork and state revenue sharing. While a few of these projects are wishless items and would never have been completed without grant funding, over $700,000 are for items that we would need to fund from general fund revenues if grants were not applied for and awarded, such as the $525,000 for ball field lighting replacement in fiscal year 2025. Moving on to other funds, we will highlight major streets, local streets, and water and sewer funding. Major streets constructions proposed in the amount of $1.4 million, including $500,000 for a five-year phase funding of John R Road, as well as sectional and street repairs. Local street construction is proposed in the amount of $1.9 million and includes four road millage projects, as well as concrete replacement and street repairs. It is important to note that the local road millage expires in 2026, and we will have to go out to a vote for R4 in August of 2026 to continue our neighborhood road projects. In the water and sewer fund, $1.3 million is budgeted for water main replacement and additional funding for a sanitary sewer rehabilitation program. In addition, the city is receiving a 3.06% increase from our water supplier and an anticipated 4% increase from water and sewer treatment. In order to pay for the construction and for these third-party increases, we will adjust water and sewer rates to our end users by 4.02%, as detailed in the following slide. The city has an extensive five-year capital improvement plan that detailed water main replacement needs for the current and next five years. In order to maintain our replacement and repair of sewer, of water mains, the city will need to consider additional increases to the rates and/or take in a loan for repairs. Even with the 4.02% increase, Madison Heights still has one of the lowest rates in our region. Based on the consumption average of 12 units, 748 gallons of water per unit, Madison Heights' average bill is $132 per quarter. The chart above shows the proposed fiscal year 2025 increase rate for Madison Heights compared to the current 2024 rates of other communities.
The city takes pride in its sound financial management, prudent allocation of resources, and steadfast commitment to long-term planning. This proposed budget continues to address evolving conditions and is a statement of our adaptability and resilience. Together, we are witnessing the fruitation of the collective efforts bringing success to our community. So this concludes our budget presentation. And as you see in the audience, all of the department heads are here. If you have any specific questions about anything we covered either in the presentation or that you have reviewed in the line item.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. We are not voting on this tonight. We will be voting on this in a couple of weeks at our next meeting on May 13. But I do want to open it up for council if there's any questions that council has for either finance, the city manager, or any of the department heads.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just had a question, if anybody can answer, about the water and sewer rates. How did Warren and Troy get so much lower than everyone else? Is there...
They supplement their rates with other general fund money.
So how, can you explain that a little bit in detail, what does that mean?
Whatever projects they have going on, whatever rate increases are there, they have a certain amount that they're going to set for their rates, and then anything else that's needed, they transfer or loan money from another fund to pay for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
A question on the Special Projects Fund with parks. We created that, I think, three years ago. Is that, is that up to $150,000 now?
No, we've been spending it. We use it for grant matches and things that we typically could not do without that extra money. So there's $50,000 in the budget right now. And then if we don't spend that, that would be carried forward for $100,000 next year. And I don't remember exactly. I know last year we used it for a grant match to do projects that we normally wouldn't be able to do that's enhanced the parks.
If we could get a quick report to council on that. I don't think this year, but I'd love to see that fund grow as we're continuing to see record-setting numbers as far as grants go. I think $2.5 million in grants alone this year. I'd love, I'd love to see that fund and maybe even similar funds that we could create in other areas like public safety and things to be able to be as opportunistic as we continue to be.
Any other questions, comments from council? All right.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Yes. The sewer increase for the sewer, do you know, is that all, is that all of it coming from the George Coon Drain? Or is that some other part of it is our maintenance of our own sewer system within the city?
Yeah, the 4% that was discussed in the, in the slide was specific to the GWK drain, yeah, the GWK increase.
Okay, because I would like to get a report from the county. If we could ask them for a report of what they're doing with the money, what improvements they're making to the George Coon Drain that we're seeing an increase for the sewage increase itself.
Actually, we have a meeting about it tomorrow, but it is mostly related to their operation cost. So their operation cost to pay their operators and their employees and things get passed on to all of the users, which is Madison Heights, to fund their just day-to-day operations. So as far as, we reach out to them over the bond. So you'll see as part of the tax levy, the Chapter 20 bond has drastically reduced this year. They don't have any major projects planned for the Coon Drain that's going to require bonding and paying back from each individual community beyond just regular maintenance. So it's just their operation expenses.
Any other questions?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Just, this is kind of the opportunity, the public, the 30 people that'll watch this on YouTube, are going to be able to take this in and then give us their comments, questions prior to the next meeting when we adopt the budget. So I'd love it if the chief could come up and talk about the inclusion of these EMTs, because it's new for the city, adding effectively a second class into, into the fire department that are specialized just for the EMT runs.
Yeah, so we're working on a, it's a multi-level. Right now, we were meeting with the unions to negotiate how this plan is moving forward. But the goal would be to have a fourth rescue during our peak call volume, which typically between 8:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the, in the afternoon. So we're trying to get another additional unit, so we have enough to, to protect the residents. But we're looking to hire three medically-trained personnel to staff that unit. This is a new idea, that we don't have anyone else in the area that has done this. So we're hoping for the best, but we're willing to try something new because we see that is an issue with, with the run volume going up in our current staffing level. So it's in the infancy of this planning, so we're moving along. It keeps sort of moving along the different, how we're going to do this. But we're still negotiating, we're still trying to figure this out. But we're, we're willing to try it. If it fails, then at least we tried. But it is definitely a new approach that, so we're on territory territories with that.
And your honor, if I may? What, it's, it's in the, the high 90% of the runs are, are medical in nature versus fire runs, right, in our city?
Correct. I think it's like 80, 84%
Okay.
is related to EMS-related type of calls. The rest are other type of emergencies.
And, and so this, this move, for our residents' sake, would get them the same level of trained professionals that they're used to seeing in a medical run. It's just they would not be responding to fires
That is correct.
whereas the firefighters would.
That is correct. We are going to hire only trained medical employees. They will not be trained in the fireside of the division.
Thank you.
So just on that point, you said 84%. Is that 84% of...
I'm talking off the top of my head, but it is
Okay.
significantly more is EMS-related.
No, I understand that, but is that, is that 84% of calls that could be potentially for police? Or is that calls that are for the fire station?
Fireside.
Okay, thank you.
Fireside.
Thank you for the clarification. And I'm not holding you to the number.
I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions that you...
I have a question, but not for the chief.
Okay.
So, a question about the...
Chief, thank you.
Oh, not for you. Yeah. Sorry. Talking about streets, the John R overlay and a little mile sectional, I want to just talk about that real quickly, just for people who are watching. And so, Sean. The John R overlay, that's 14 mile all the way to 10 mile, and it's just a, it's not a full rebuild, right? It's just the overlay of that.
So actually, the John R section is, it's the city-owned asphalt section. So that's from 11 mile north to just about Texas Roadhouse or Dartmouth Street. Then anything north of that to 14 mile is actually owned by the county, which they're planning on doing in fiscal 2025. We would be doing our asphalt part, and that is a, it's a mill, but it's also repairing the detail seven joints, which are the ones that go across the road that have made the sort of speed bump effect. So we'd be milling those down, repairing any bad joints, and then putting a new coat of about, it's typically two and a half and then a two-inch layer of asphalt on top of that.
Okay, so it's just that one section of John R this year?
Correct.
And then, and will that be in this, fiscal year starts July 1?
Yes.
So that would be like summer months type?
Actually, our section of John R asphalt is 2026 because it's matching the federal funding. We are, the project's being over 50% funded by a federal aid committee grant, and that is in fiscal 2026.
Okay, so not this, not this calendar year next. What about the county piece, though? You said 2025.
The county, they are planning on doing it, and that would be not this upcoming summer, but next summer.
Okay, so nobody's working on John R this summer?
Correct.
No. Okay. And then that 11-mile sectional, that is, is that, that's not the area that we're working with the DDA? There's, it's a different area, correct?
Yeah, it's east of that. So we started working from Dequinder heading west into the city. We, we finally got rid of that worst of the worst part. When you come across the Dequinder, that whole slab was terrible and got us just about Nanton. So that'll be continuing west of Nanton, but not interfering with the DDA area because that is separate funding. We don't, we certainly don't want to repave the road and then reconfigure the road.
Right, right. Okay, and I know people ask me, why isn't Dequinder on this list? I know why, but why don't you tell us?
Dequinder is a Macomb County road. So this is a unique situation we get, and we are doing our very best to try to educate residents on exactly who owns what road, because we are not only on the border of several cities, but also two counties and MDOT right of way. So there's a road that could be Macomb County, Oakland County, Madison Heights, MDOT, Hazel Park, like, it could be anyone's road. So especially with our border roads, even though Dequinder, it's on the Madison Heights side of the road, the entirety of Dequinder from 10 to 14 is maintained by Oakland County road, or, I'm sorry, Macomb County roads. We have been in communication with them because it desperately needs help. And according to them, they do not have it on their capital plan at the moment. They've done some very limited pavement repairs, especially around Solberg Tower, which was extremely helpful. But those were just minor patches. There is no whole scale in the five-year plan for Dequinder Road.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Your Honor?
Okay, hold on. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ballantyne? Just while he's up there. Okay, thank you for that. And now do you have questions about something else? I think there were two of you.
Your Honor, I just had a quick question, I guess again, for Chief Leto, about, or Melissa, didn't we budget for adding additional positions with the fire department or...
So we did budget for the three EMT positions, but that has to be negotiated with the union.
Wasn't there, I would like another role we were looking at, or is that for future?
We originally had looked at also including a deputy chief, but that did not get included into the budget in its entirety. So we know that we're going to have to add a position if we get ground emergency management transportation funding from the federal government, which there's a big push to get that going, but I can't sit here and say with certainty when the city's going to see the first funding from that. But that will be an administrative lift on our department. So we will have to add to our administrative staff in order to implement that program, which actually, we estimate could be about $600,000 back to the community. So that's definitely a win-win for us.
All right, thank you.
Your Honor, Fire Chief, one question about, sorry to be redundant, but the three that are coming on, are they basic or are they medics?
Well, the initial proposal was basic, but in discussions with the... Well, the initial proposal was basic, but in discussions with the union, we came up with a conclusion that we could hire paramedics and still have plenty of funding to fund those positions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we did that because we thought it would be easier with dispatch, and they would also fit into the department better. There wouldn't be, you know, just certain calls, they could go on, they could do more emergency management. And we also thought that this, if this was successful, which as Greg pointed out, it's an idea, and, you know, thankful to city council, I have always been really encouraged just to try new things. If it doesn't work, you're not going to, you know, hang me from the, you know, be upset with me about that. So this was just an effort to try something new to help out our current situation, and we hoped that it would be a feeder program. And by that, I mean, we currently have two vacancies, and you can ask almost any department in this entire region, and they have vacancies, and it is extremely hard to recruit these positions. So if we had somebody that was great in this position, they could move up in our department and fill a different role. So we kind of thought of it like that, but we have to get the program up and going first. So we still have a few more obstacles to get through, but the funding is included in the budget for just those three.
That answer, Mr. Soltis? All right, any other questions for the fire chief? Any other questions or comments from anyone about? Nope, okay, all right. Then I'm going to close discussion. We are, again, we are not voting on this tonight, we are voting on this next month in May, but.
So just to elaborate on that, under the city charter, council has to adopt this by the third Monday in May. So if there are any questions or changes, like now is your opportunity to bring that up, so staff doesn't have, you know, time, you can't tell us on the 13th and think that we're going to get that turned around in time to meet that charter amendment, which is why we start early in March with the budget preview memo, and we have several minute meetings with our council and try to get all the kinks worked out before we get to this point. So I think that we have done that, and just encourage you, if you do have any questions, to follow up with me later or to do it now.
All right.
Your honor?
Yes?
I just want to say thank you for all of the hard work that has gone into putting these numbers together. I've done this at a much smaller scale, and it's a challenge, so if you're talking about $66 million, that's a lot of juggling that has to happen. I don't have a lot of questions tonight because City Manager Marsh was good enough to spend, what, about five or six hours, I think, with me over the last couple of weeks going through line by line. So I appreciate that effort and all the effort of Linda and all the department heads.
All right, good, thank you. All right, thank you for everything you put into this, and thank you all for coming out this evening, I appreciate it. I am going to move on to public comment. So if there's anyone in the public who wishes to speak this evening, ask that you come to the podium, take three minutes, address me, give your name, address, any affiliation with the city. And with that, is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I did receive an email today. Cliff is going to read, but I am going to close public comment.
This is from Jerry Campbell. The email states, "The vehicle parked on the apron at 1596 West 13 Mile Road is blocking the view of oncoming traffic, and as a result, stop at the stop sign, then inch forward and nose out into 13 Mile to try and gauge clear distance of the westbound oncoming traffic, usually speeding. This blocks the sidewalk crossover for pedestrian traffic, causing a separate issue. Now do this for a year after year, and you will be conditioned not to first stop before the pedestrian crossover, but just proceed to the nose and the roadway vantage point. One time, a young runner, cross-country training, after dark, wearing all black, is jogging at the same time that my wife and I are pulling up after conditioning. Concentrating on what traffic is coming from behind the parked car on the apron, the runner does not stop but runs in front of our vehicle. No contact was made with the man in the black jogging. Get the picture? Now combine this whole situation on a normal school day as buses and the daily lineup of vehicles exiting with their children aboard from the Landfare Learning Center. This email is to warn the city and the owner of that vehicle of hazardous conditions that exist that can be avoided before something happens. I monitor the parking situation at the address. There is plenty of room for multiple cars to park safely in the garage, backyard, side of the house, with room for more cars. I get it that the homeowner probably does not want to shift vehicles to get to the one furthest in the driveway out. I have to play driveway rodeo with my wife almost every day and deal with it. Please share my concerns tonight at council."
All right, thank you. And just to follow up on this, the police did look into this, and we understand that there is a concern here, but there is nothing illegal being done, and there is nothing that can legally be enforced on this. So this is legal, this person is legally parked, so just, I guess, a warning to everyone just to be very, very careful when you're driving on 13 Mile and everywhere else. And I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. There are three items this evening, number six, Autism Acceptance Month proclamation, and then seven and eight, the special meeting and regular meeting minutes from April 8, 2024, as printed. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your honor?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Yes?
Support?
Thank you, motion has been made. And second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes against saying nope, motion carries. We have already taken care of the Historical Commission naming, so I invite closing comments, starting with Mr. Muir.
I'll try and be quick tonight, thank you. Happy Passover next week for all that celebrate that. Horrible things going on over there, and I am very saddened by all of that. Hopefully you can find some joys next week with Passover. Got a lot of meetings coming up with the Parks and Recs this week, ITAC and library next week, so looking forward to those. Great proclamations tonight with dispatch, animal control, and et cetera. Good honor to those folks. As I mentioned about the budget, special thanks to all the hard work that goes into that. Glad we recognize autism awareness, and I'd like to look for more events that the city can help promote to be more inclusive and for all abilities. A couple of folks have mentioned to me that, you know, those are some of the things that may bear a lack in a little bit, so I'd like to look into that a little bit more. And great job with the Historical Commission that I used to be a citizen member of, with the rock music, sorry, history of music, I focus on rock, but, and the presentations they gave tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Yes, your honor. The, first I want to start off by saying thank you to council and for the work of staff for the 2024 naming honorees coming from the Historical Commission, like the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, to Councilman Muir's language. There's always more, too many well-deserving people that we need to honor than there are available slots for us to recognize in any year. Honestly, we have a bit of a backlog since this is a new program as of last year, but with the help of staff, with the great work of the Historical Commission, and then the support of this council, we will keep chipping away at it, and hopefully we'll get to a point where we only have to honor one person every single year because, you know, we'll have honored all of those who gave, like, the minimum requirements, just as a refresher to those in the public watching, you have to have served in an elected capacity in our city for over a decade is the bare minimum requirement. And to say that there's a backlog of people that meet that criteria, it seems a little outstanding to say, but there is a backlog of people who meet that criteria. And so we'll keep, we'll keep chipping away at it, expect a similar group for next year, and what's most exciting about it is not the night where we vote to approve the names. I think the most exciting part about it is getting to see the families and members of the community out at each individual event that we hold when we do the unveiling with the, there's always a plaque with like a paragraph of what that person did in the city, and it's just a great time to share memories and inspire the next generation. So I can't wait to do that with the four honorees that we mentioned here tonight, and I know it's going to be a lot of work scheduling all of those things, and there's conditional elements, like there has to be a pavilion built in Rosie's Park before we can name it after somebody. But all of those things will take place, and it'll be a lot of fun. As Councilman Muir mentioned, we had the History of Music in Madison Heights and Beyond presentation tonight with the Historical Commission sponsored it. It's the reason why I've got a pile of my A-tracks sitting here the whole meeting, which, you know, looks a little weird, but we went in pretty, pretty deep conversation about everything from Motown to the different types of media, from reel to reel to cassettes, vinyl records, how to collect them nowadays, the things to look for. It was a really great time, we had some phenomenal speakers, including Michael Shepard, the owner of Northern Audio, who we honored earlier in this meeting, and I can't wait to do more events like that with the Historical Commission. The more that we can get that type of information out into the public, I think the better that we do, because we turn the historical museum into not just a place, but it becomes a foundational conversation that anybody can access. And thanks to City Manager Marsh, made sure that we had the video recorded tonight, so anybody who wants to watch that presentation on the history of music in our city and the region, you'll be able to find it on YouTube. Finally, last but certainly not least, I do want to give a big thank you to staff on the budget. Not just our city manager, but every department head and everybody that was involved in this. I can say wholeheartedly, this is the very best budget that I have seen in my time on It's, I mean, just to give a recap, the tax millage is down. We have record-setting money from outside of taxes, so grants 2.5 million this year alone, more in the last two years than the previous eight before that. So congrats, Adam, on that well-deserved promotion. Cannabis brought in 1.5 million since we adopted that ordinance. We're funding things like public safety and quality of life initiatives higher than at any time in our city's history. And aside from not increasing the tax millage, we're also keeping a solid emergency fund in place because our staff and this council understands that we're often teetering on a recession nowadays, especially with inflation numbers the way they are. So to be able to do all of those things at the same time is incredible, and so to any residents that are watching, I'd encourage you, look at the presentation that was shared tonight, and, you know, reach out to us if you have any questions, but wholeheartedly, I believe, this is the best budget I've seen in my time on council, and major props to all of our staff for making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Your honor, thank you. I first wanted to just say kudos on the historical event, and, you know, I think it's awesome that we always celebrate our history, the history of the city, and say thank you to those folks who probably will never be acknowledged and work tirelessly and will go nameless into the future. Those, there are a lot of like mothers and community members who were never popular enough, who will never be known enough to ever get their name on the wall, and I never want to ever forget them and make sure that we always acknowledge those silent heroes that kind of go and fall into the shadows as time goes on. April is National Minority Health Month. It focuses on the disparities that kind of are in our national, our natural health network, and that's another cause I just wanted to bring a little bit of attention to, but other than that, I'll just remind everyone to be kind.
Mr. Sherman?
Your honor, just a couple of comments. First, congratulations to the Historical Commission on the history of music presentation. I walked in kind of in the middle, but there were some very interesting comments made, historical comments relating to Paul McCartney at the Motown Museum, and anyone who's interested in watching it should take advantage of it and watch it on, watch it on either the city cable channel or YouTube. You know, also kudos to the Historical Commission on the decisions they made in terms of honoring these outstanding public servants that we, and that council confirmed tonight, and I had the pleasure of working with all of them. Ed Swanson was just a prince of a guy who loved people. He didn't want to say no to any citizen here on any issue. He just, he just loved everybody, he did an outstanding job. Elva Mills, you never had to wonder where she was coming from on any particular issue because she would just tell you. She was a leader on council, just like she was a leader on the Madison School Board before she was elected to city council, and just like she was a leader in the thumb area in Lexington where she owned a home and became very involved in politics there. Lynn Ross was a tremendous councilperson who served the city for many, many years. I would describe him as the glue on city council during some turbulent times in the 1980s and early to mid 1990s, and he was the epitome of what a councilman should be, in my opinion. He really took to heart every issue, he was extremely well-read, and made very informed decisions. Just, it was just a pleasure working with him and serving at the same time. Rich Clark, we talked about last week quite a bit in his passing, and just like Mayor Protem Bliss commented about his passion for seniors, and Councilman Soltis talked about him taking over the mantle, that Rich Clark was kind of his mentor with regard to seniors and otherwise, and that's kind of what, that's kind of what the city needs in terms of, in terms of transitioning. So, so as I see the current council and other members who have come along over the years, I see some of the same qualities that I saw years and years ago from these public servants. They deserve this honor, and they will be remembered because of their devotion to this city. So it's a wonderful thing. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
Just thank you to all the staff for their help on the budget. You know, it's a lot of work, it's really a heavy lift to get us here today, and so we made it, so that's good news. And also, the budget presentation is going to be pulled out as a separate file from this meeting tonight and posted, so it'll be easier for the residents or anybody who's interested to see the presentation separate.
Thank you, I was going to ask about that. Anything from the courts office this evening? All right, counsel for Buck?
Just a couple things. Thank you, staff. I know budgets, I always would tell people when I would work on something like that, I'd be like, I'm in the, I'm in hell. But, so, we're almost to the end. But, so I just want to remind everybody that April 20th, this coming Saturday, is the Madison Heights 5K, so you should come out for that, that's going to be a lot of fun. And, and then this, so during the springtime, I know, I don't know about all of you, but this weekend, I got outside, I started working on my yard, I started doing things, and, you know, picking up all the debris that has gathered in the backyard from neglect over the entire winter, and as I'm doing that, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, wait a little bit before you completely clear out your brush from your flower beds and things like that, because all of those little small pollinators and things like that are still living in your dead leaves and the little branches that have lived in on your, in your flower garden all winter long, and they won't really come out and start, you know, living the rest of their lives and being beneficial to our environment until the, we're at like steadily over 50 degrees for a couple of weeks. So just keep that in mind, so don't rip everything out just yet, give it a little time, and when you give it a little time, you'll be just in time for the brush pickup day on the week of May 6. The trash folks will come around and pick up any brush on the easement in front of your house during, on your trash day on the week of May 6. So if you wait, you won't have to pack it all into those bags, you can wait and put it out that week. So I just encourage people to do that because we want to save our pollinators and do well for our environment. Also, coming up, May 18th is the Friends of the Library book sale. A lot of work goes into that, and if you haven't been to the book sale in the last couple of years, they have the plan where you pay what you want. So you get as many books as you want, and you pay whatever you want. If that's, you know, you have a stack of books and you think that's worth a dollar, you pay a dollar. If you have a stack of books and you want to give $20, you can do that, you pay what you want at those Friends of the Library book sales, but they're really cool, they're very curated, and they're going to be at the, in the Breckenridge Room. And then going along with all of that, the May 11th, I think is the spring clean, so if you have your items like bricks, tires, drywall, stuff like that, that's sitting in your garage, and then you need to get rid of it, don't put it on the curb, but on May 11th, you can take it to our DPS, and they will take it out of your car and get rid of it. and get rid of it for you. So that is a really great day. Make sure you have your ID and come out because our staff are amazing and they will do a great job to get that cleaned up for you. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Fleming?
No comments tonight.
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. So I got another story about Mayor Swanson. When Mayor Protem and I were first on and it was, I don't know, a couple sessions into it. And so afterwards, he said, he said, "Come on over here and talk to me for a minute." And so he said, he said, "Are you enjoying yourself?" I said, "Yeah, I'm, I'm getting, you know, I, I like it." And he says, "Well, are you learning or anything?" I said, "Yeah, you know, I learned this and this." He says, "Okay, good. Make sure you wear a tie every time." So I was like, okay. About the senior trip, it's May first. We still have some openings. It's closing real fast. Right now we got like over thirty that are, are coming. And so it's May first. Just call City Hall or myself if you want to go. And then, oh, thank you for the planning tip because I was ready to throw out my, I was ready to pull it out because it was, because it was last year I had it and it looked dead. So I, but I, I'll keep it in there for a minute. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I want to echo the thanks to Mrs. Marsh, Mrs. Kuma and all of the department heads and staff for working on the budget. Want to congratulate Adam on his promotion to his new job. As you heard, we've received a ton of grants and Adam's going to get us even more now. No pressure. The DDA was mentioned, so I just want to let everybody know that we are having a DDA meeting tomorrow morning. It is at City Hall. It's at eight o'clock. So it is open to the public if anyone is interested to, in coming to that. And with, with this month being Autism Acceptance Month, I just want to throw out a couple of stats about it. And that is that the rates of autism diagnosis are going up, whether it's because people are being diagnosed more than they were or the rates are going up because people have it. It is now one in fifty-four children. So there are over fifty thousand individuals just in Michigan alone. And there isn't a cure for it, but it's also not something that's necessarily a disability. It's just a different way of thinking and different way of being neuro, neurodivergent. So just to sort of keep that in mind. And I also would like to see some more programming in the city for people who have, you know, different abilities, whether they be physical or emotional, you know, whatever their challenges are, I would love to see more programs like that as well. So if anyone has any ideas on programs you would like to see, please feel free to reach out to me. I am, I, I'm, you know, I'm all ears. I would love to, to set something up. We had, we had our namings today and of course, I can't wait to be at the naming for Ed Swanson, the man who married myself and my husband in our old council chambers many, many years ago. The time is eight forty and our next meeting is May thirteenth. This meeting is adjourned tonight.